All right, so now being 6 o'clock, I'll call the March 19th meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. We have a 6 o'clock appointment, and that is with MRI to do a presentation and discussion of the FIRE and EMS study. And it's great to see all these people here to discuss the FIRE study and the recommendations. I want to establish some ground rules to ensure for a thoughtful and productive discussion. First, MRI will present their findings and recommendations. This should take about a half an hour. Upon completion of their presentation, we will entertain questions about the study and MRI's recommendations. We will not be discussing topics beyond the scope of the study and recommendations. Please raise your hand to be recognized. Go to the podium, identify yourself, and ask your question through the board. So the questions need to be directed to us. Upon completion of your question, please return to your seat, and MRI will respond to your inquiry, or if your inquiry is directed to us, will respond to your inquiry. We'd like everybody to have an opportunity to ask a first question before we go to second questions. One person will speak at a time, and I ask that we treat one another with respect. To think that we were all going to be in agreement on every issue is naive. It is our diversity and the exchange of ideas that often leads to the best solutions. At the end of the day, we are all friends and neighbors, here because we care about the Fire Department and the brave men and women who serve on it. Tonight's discussion is the first of many to explore and gather information so that we, as a town, can determine what FIRE and EMS models best meet our current and future needs. So I'll turn things over to you, Mark.
So just a review of open meeting law. This all goes without saying, but just so we're all on the same page. Under open meeting law, the public is permitted to attend any open meetings. While the public is permitted to attend these meetings, an individual may not address the public body without permission of the chair. An individual may not disrupt a meeting of a public body, and at the request of the chair, all members of the public shall be silent. Again, this is Massachusetts Open Meeting Law. If after a clear warning, a person continues to be disruptive, the chair may order the person to leave the meeting. If the person does not leave, the chair may authorize Constable or other officer to remove the person. Although the public participation is entirely at the chair's discretion, the Attorney General encourages the public body to allow as much public participation as possible. So this is just another way of saying that we want to have a serious, respectful, civil, constructive conversation to deal with the complex and serious issues before us.
All right, and I'm just going to take a quick backup and say this meeting is being recorded for cable cast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. All right, and now, John?
I'm going to stand so I can see you all. I got to give you a little background on how we got here to the MRI report. Back in the fall of 2016, the Board of Selectmen at that time met with the chief and talked about, "We need a roadmap for the next five years." A lot of questions about where we would go and how we were going to get there. And so the chief agreed, and he reached out to both CAVR and the Halifax Chiefs to start that discussion. In November of 2016, we had a joint meeting with the Halifax Selectmen, the Fire Chief from Halifax, ourselves, and Chief Borsari. That is on cable, so you can all see it. It's November 26, 2017. Uh, '16, I'm sorry. In January, we had a Board of Selectmen meeting where the Fire Chief came and talked about the ambulance staffing concerns. This one is also on cable, and it was also written up in the Plimpton Halifax Express. The concern was that we could lose our advanced life support and have to drop to basic, and I would encourage you to go look at that. In February of 2017, I and the town coordinator at that time, Dale Plou, met with the town manager for CAVR and Alan Dunham, who was a selectman, still is a selectman, I believe the chairman. And it was just an outreach to say, "Hey, we're thinking of sharing services across all our departments, wherever it makes sense." And we had a conversation. It was the same conversation we had had with the Halifax Selectmen back in November, but it wasn't quite as in-depth. We decided to put forth a request at the annual town meeting to ask the town to authorize a study for $20,000. Town meeting approved that. We solicited four bids from consulting firms. The four firms were the Kautzen Corporation, the Matrix Consulting, Municipal Consultants of New England, and Municipal Resources, Inc., MRI. All of these people had a specialty in municipal services, fire, and police. We interviewed all of them at Board of Selectmen meeting, also on cable, and we selected MRI. We then scheduled interviews. We asked the Fire Chief to schedule the internal interviews with MRI. We then went out and we made up a list of people outside the Fire Department that we thought MRI should be talking to, and I'll just run down quickly some of these. Dylan Law, who was a former Plimpton captain in the paramedic at the Fire Department; Brad Cronin, Newport Fire Department and former member; Pat Dillon, Plimpton Police Chief; Barbara Gomez, Town Accountant; Art Moran, Plimpton Board of Health Chairman; Nick Sealy, Facilities Manager at Light Control; Peter Venito, Principal, Denham Elementary School; Max West, Chair of the Former Plimpton Ambulance Study; Joe Gibbons, Former Plimpton Fire Lieutenant, EMT; George Colby, Retired Plimpton Firefighter; Susan Ossoff, Former Plimpton Finance Committee Chair; Jim Mulcahy, Highway Supervisor but a Retired Plimpton Fire Captain; Nate Sides, Existing Plimpton Finance Committee Chair; Barbara True, Former Plimpton EMT; Steve Winslow, Former Plimpton Fire Deputy Chief; Jason Viveros, Halifax Fire Chief. We also, the chief asked us to talk to Rick Jordan, and unfortunately, we didn't connect, but that's something we're going to do now. This was a combination of people that the Board of Selectmen had put on the list, as well as Fire Chief Borsari. So that's how we got to the MRI consultant. Now they're going to make a presentation, and we're not going to take any questions during it. After that, you'll be free to ask questions. So I'm going to introduce Bob Lumer. Bob is from MRI Consulting.
Thank you, John. Good evening. I'm here tonight with my colleague Peter Finley from MRI. As John mentioned, we were successful in our bid application to perform the study. Just a moment, I'm going to take you through precisely what we were asked to do. I will be spending approximately 20 minutes with you to try to give you an overview. If you haven't done so already, I would invite you, as taxpayers and members of the department, to carefully read 107-page report. I want to walk you through carefully all of this. Again, we were asked to look at six specific items, and I'd like to talk about each one of them. Before I do, just a brief introduction about MRI, myself, and my fellow colleagues. Municipal Resources is a company that's been in business for about 27 years. We're based in Meredith, New Hampshire. Alto all, there's over 100 consultants that work for MRI, and it's a very diverse job. We do everything from school superintendents through town administrators, but that's really not my forte. There are approximately 10 of us that work within FIRE and EMS. Every one of us are seasoned fire professionals, in my case. I had the good fortune of working in the fire service full-time for about 38 years, went up through the ranks as Chief of Department. Quite honestly, as a retired person who can't get enough of the fire service, that's why I'm still involved. I'm also involved professionally as an instructor with the State of Massachusetts, and I understand, I believe I understand, the passion and the dedication that is unique to the fire service. John, you mentioned earlier tonight, or maybe it was Christine, that said, "There are a lot of things that we're not going to agree on, okay? So as we present the findings that we had, I'm sure that members and community folks may take exception to that." We did our level best to look at the six specific objectives that we were asked to, six specific scope-of-work items that we were asked to study, and give you folks an honest assessment. So with that, I'll get started, and if I could, I just want to point out that the screen, we had hoped to have filled the entire screen. Neither my colleague or I, while we're pretty well-versed in the fire service, we're not masters of PowerPoint, and apparently, there's a compatibility issue between your brand-new projection screen and our laptop. So with that, I'll get started. And again, I apologize if you can't read the slides. I will make this presentation available to the town if they would like to put it up on their website afterwards. It may help folks understand how we came together. So as your board mentioned, it was late September that we came to an agreement, and we were anxious to get started. We knew that this would take a while. We were boots-on-the-ground here in mid-October. The study team for this particular assignment, and I should mention, I think I mentioned earlier, there were about 10 or 11 of us that are consultants. We tried to match the study team with the type of community that we're looking at. I have experience in combination fire departments in small and medium size. I retired in a predominantly career fire department, but since my retirement, I've worked with extensively smaller organizations. I've served twice now as an interim Fire Chief after my retirement in communities throughout New England and advised fire chiefs. And again, so I just want to point that out, that we really focus on, we're asked to do something for the community. You're our client. You want answers, and that's what we like to do. We like to look at it unbiasedly. Some folks will say, "Well, of course, you're Fire Chief, so you must be slanted towards the fire end of it." No, Municipal Resources looks at what government needs are. So if I could, there were only six points that we were asked to look at, and I want to kind of go through each one of these individually. The first scope-of-work item we were asked to do is to develop for the town an emergency medical services cost-revenue projection, looking forward for the next five years. What's unique about EMS is that unlike fire protection, there is both a revenue to be derived and obviously a cost involved in that. I commend the department for taking the step to not only provide basic life support, but to go that extra mile and provide advanced life support. As you folks know, advanced life support is something that can save lives, and it's not cheap to do. It requires people that are dedicated, but also people that are trained. And we heard that that's the standard of care that the residents of the community wanted to have, that they want to make sure that pre-hospital intervention would be there. So we looked at that. We looked at both what your revenue is coming in, as well as what your cost is associated with that. The second scope-of-work item that we were asked to do is look at the level of service, not only for FIRE, but also for EMS that's currently being provided. Now, we look at metrics. We look at everything from your staffing, your training, and your response. How quickly can they service the community's needs? And I'm going to speak to those issues later on in this report. But again, as is clearly stated, this is actually language that's lifted from our agreement with your Board of Selectmen. Item number three, we were asked to develop a series of questions that the town of Plimpton should ask the town of Halifax relative to the potential collaboration and shared services related to the provision of FIRE and EMS services. These questions would include the consideration of the concept of having the town of Halifax deliver some emergency services to the town of Plimpton at night. That was our directive. And again, I just want to stress, and I think John did a great job of it, saying that early on, I think the board was looking for all alternatives. We certainly weren't told that this was any type of a done deal, but apparently, communities had begun to talk, and this community wanted to get an objective look from the outside as far as, is that worth any further study, any further approach? What are the questions? To read our report, we'll tell you, there's 94 questions within that report that this community needs to get satisfied before they ever agree with any community for a shared service concept. All right, so we're halfway home, and I apologize again for the slides not being a little bit easier to read. Next, we were asked to provide an analysis of and recommendations relative to the potential privatization of emergency medical services. Now, again, that relates to the ambulance service. As I'm sure you realize, in some communities across the Commonwealth, ambulance service is a private service. It's a private-for-profit service. There have been some ambulance companies in this area, I think most notably Brewster Ambulance. Some cities and towns decide that's the way they want to do business. I think the board asked us to look at that to see if there was a viable alternative. And again, within the body of the report, we talked about that. We investigated that, and we'll discuss that later on this evening. Then we were asked to do a thorough review of the current and fire services provided to the town and provide an analysis as to whether or not the services meeting the needs of the community, along with recommendations for improvement. And I think the most important words in that statement is "recommendations for improvement." Anybody can come in and say, you know, "This isn't good. This is broken. That's not what MRI does." We try to provide a pathway forward for any organization that we look at. Some of the recommendations are embraced, others are rejected. These decisions are yours, not, you know, none of this is imposed upon you. And then finally, we were asked to evaluate the current efforts of the Fire Department regarding recruitment and retention. Your department is predominantly an on-call force. You have a very small career staff, but in all candor, that's what serves your community best. Very careful that you understand that nothing in this report was pointing at all towards a career operation. Just the opposite is true. If you read the report, you'll see that we suggest fairly strongly that a department needs to have an ongoing, regular recruitment effort. You need to build a department that's responsive to your community's needs. That needs to be folks that can get to those calls in time, folks that are local, folks that are dedicated. We talked about that. And we were also asked to study the question of retention. There was a concern among the board that was expressed to us that there had been a high level of turnover within this department within the last several years, and then we're looking to try to determine reasons why that might be happening. So those were the six items that we were all asked, that MRI was asked to look at. They form the basis of the study of our report to you, the citizens of the community. Mentioned this before, but again, we hope that what we've done for you guys has put together a useful guide that'll give you a vision of the challenges, as well as the opportunity that face you, the strengths, as well as the weaknesses that you currently have, so that you guys can work together, Fire Department and community, to provide the citizens what they're entitled to. So let's get started. Real quick, how we did this, John already talked to it. Yes, we did, we were directed to focus on some primary stakeholders from the board, but also, we made it very clear, we wanted to speak to every single member of the department at that time. An email invitation was sent based on email addresses that were provided to MRI by the Fire Department. Of the 28 people that I think we were given email addresses, folks that we hadn't already spoken to in that department, we had approximately 12 respond back to that. Our preference was to do face-to-face conversations with folks, but in some cases, because we were here predominantly during weekdays, that didn't work out. So we conducted both face-to-face interviews here in community, as well as conference calls with individuals that were interviewed over the phone. We had focused interview for the members of the department. We asked them specific questions relative to their training, their level of comfort within the organization, and we promised the individuals that we spoke to that they could speak to us in candor, that their remach would remain confidential. So you see none of that in the report. We did see trends, and we'll talk about those trends that we saw, and we'll get into that a little bit later on. We focus our reports based on fact finding, so before we even got here, Chief Borsari was challenged with, I think there were 24 items that we asked to see, everything from the budget, the demographics, the response time, the level of training and qualifications for personnel. So there was a lot of heavy lifting that was done, not only by the chief, but also other members of the department that helped prepare those documents. Peter's role in all of this was that while myself and my fellow colleague, our retired Fire Chief Bob Craig, were the boots-on-the-ground here, Peter was the person who took all that raw data, who analyzed that data. He had plenty of feedback questions, and ultimately, Peter's talents as a report writer are shown in what I believe is a professionally-written document that has now been accepted by the town. We evaluated onsite operations. We looked at the facilities, the apparatus, and so forth. Not a detailed analysis of the apparatus. We didn't stop the trucks. We didn't operate the trucks. Really, we didn't see that as the focus, but we did look at the type, the general condition of the apparatus. We asked to see reports. We asked the chief and others as far as, you know, the equipment itself. So you will see in our report going forward, as far as facilities, as well as equipment, what we recommend in terms of keeping the department's resources so that they complement what the town needs. We developed recommendations for improvement, and in all, there are 50 separate recommendations that follow in that report. And then also, and finally, as you saw earlier, we were directed to start investigating the feasibility of shared service agreements. I want to take just a second to talk about that. What is shared service? Shared service is a system whereby one community works with another community, usually through an intermunicipal agreement, to agree to provide different services. In some cities and towns around the state, for example, one community might do trash pickup for another, might do, you know, help out with the water department, okay? In the fire and emergency systems that we see, we've always had a shared service. The fire service will tell you mutual aid has been around forever, that when catastrophic fires plagued one community or the other, firefighters immediately respond. That's mutual. In a shared service agreement, we're really not talking about a mutual situation, but we're talking about a situation where the response might be automatic, where we say, "We're already going..." You know what? Even though that's an incorporated area of Plimpton, the town of Kingston's going to respond in there right away, because they can get there quicker. In a contracted service type of situation, we may say specifically during hours of operation, we want certain things covered. I think most of you are familiar with the town of Amherst, Massachusetts. Overview next. The town of Amherst, Massachusetts, has a shared service agreement with the adjacent community of Hadley, Massachusetts. Hadley being a much smaller community. You have a chest pain in Hadley in the middle of the night? Automatically, an ambulance from Amherst, Massachusetts will be dispatched to your door. So these are the conceptual ideas as far as shared service, and we just scratched the surface. I'm also going to be quite frank with you, that some parts of the country, the area, you will see more a regionalized approach to fire and emergency, and in some cases, even law enforcement. We see county-based systems or regional systems. That's not generally the case in the Commonwealth. 351 cities and towns in this state, and, you know, there's a lot of pride here. And we certainly didn't anywhere in that report talk about shutting down the Plimpton Fire Department. I've read that, wrote that report, or helped write that report, read it. If then somebody read into that, that we were looking to do away or disband with the PFD, then they got it wrong. But just as I gave you the analogy earlier, particularly with specialized services like advanced life support, there might be an approach there that might be worth looking at. I can tell you that MRI right now is working with other communities across the state that have the exact same challenges that you do. So, I don't want to get too long-winded, I'm going to move along. Here's what we found about the men and women that serve you. They're dedicated and passionate. My daughter, they're passionate. I spoke to people over the phone, and they say, "Dedicated? Absolute passionate? Yes." But that dedication and passion came through in many different ways. There seemed to be, although there was a lot of dedication and passion, direction became a challenge. Some folks were so passionate about for the traditional fire service that it's very common to sense of, "We've gotten away from the basics, chief. We're worrying about advanced life support when nobody can stretch an inch and three quarters along." It may not mean much to the folks in the back of the room, but for the folks in the front of the room, I think they understand where we're going. And other folks said, "You know what? EMS is our mainstay, and we need to..." Direction. Obviously, there was some turnover within the organization and some organizational turmoil. Every organization has that. What we sensed from the rank and file, meaning the firefighters, that we heard almost to the individuals, "I'd follow that guy anywhere, but that fellow over there, I wouldn't trust him with..." You know? So there was a lot of dissension within the ranks, is to the area of... If you work as a firefighter, it's a paramilitary organization. You want to understand that somebody's got your back, you want to have confidence in the men and women that you work with, and you want to make sure that whether it's an emergency call or a non-emergency call, that there's a clear direction. And again, I shared with you folks that, as we spoke to people in confidence, both people that were still within the department and individuals that had left the organization, that there was a concern, as a result of their dedication and passion, whether they are still presently within the PFD or had left that organization, that that passion came through. But questions on leadership, questions on direction, and even with certain individuals. "I know I have this job, but what specifically is my job as a captain? Do I have this as the chief's, taking care of that? Is that the deputy's responsibility over here?" We heard all of that, okay? And what we just sensed was that it needs to be strong leadership at the top, and it needs to be developed with that leadership for values, and it needs to be defined roles as far as what everybody does. And sometimes, that has to be memorialized. That has to be put into paper. This is what your job is, okay? And if you don't do that, sometimes, the organization can get a little bit dysfunctional. So we're talking about trying to have a common vision, so every man and woman in the organization understands what their job is internally. And externally, the stakeholders, meaning the citizens, understand what the capabilities and capacity of your Fire Department are all about. A couple of things that concerned us right away. We saw that the number of called firefighters was very limited, and few actually lived in Plimpton. Our understanding of the staffing model that was put in play a couple of years ago was to have what we're going to refer to as an initial response force. In the report, I talk about I R F, Initial Response Force. 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, your Fire Department is there. You recall, part of obtaining the construction trailer that's itself on was to rely on living borders for the men and women that would be there on a regular quarters for the men and women that would be there on a regular basis. I will tell you, for a town of 2,900, I commend you because most of the communities in this Commonwealth of that small population do not staff 24/7/365. It's good that you did that. Not only that you did that, but also, you set a lofty goal for yourselves. In the town's job classification, for the men and women that work in that capacity, as we understood, through your town accountant and through your selectmen, what you were looking to employ were firefighter EMT or firefighter paramedic. The staffing model suggests that since the first word there is firefighter, that every man and woman who is on duty at that fire station is in fact a firefighter. Now, the metric for that, just to explain, nationwide, is a metric, but not the law. I want to be clear on this. It's the generally-held metric of providing a man or woman with basic skills that they need to do an extremely dangerous job, is what's referred to in the report as firefighter 1-2 certification. There are 25,000 firefighters across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, plus 10,000, 11,000 career, but the majority, 15,000, 16,000 are called firefighters as well. The movement towards this standard has been in place since about the mid-1990s, okay? Although it is not the law, the view which checked most fire departments, whether their career or call, this is an objective that the chiefs will strongly advocate for, because it needs to be there. There's a professional set of qualifications. They learn skills, knowledge, and ability that prepares them for what's a very dangerous What we saw in your staffing model, and you'll see this later in the report, was that not only we were looking for that skill, but we were also looking to maintain the ability to provide pre-hostile care at the advanced life support level. That means that in this region of the state, that in order to practice advanced life support, a minimum of one of those two individuals must be a licensed paramedic in order for that system to stand up and operate. So, as we look at staffing, and that's not an easy thing to do. Find people that are willing to come into this firehouse and per diem, remember, they're not a full-time employee, they don't have benefits, come in, fill these assignments, and be both, one of them be a paramedic, both of them be firefighters. And as you'll see later on, sadly, we saw that that really wasn't the case. Yes, we had two passionate, dedicated individuals on duty, but in some cases, in rare opportunities, actually, in less than 10% of the time, you weren't really staffed on a paramedic level. But, in a much greater amount of the time, you were not staffed with people who were met the qualification of firefighter 1-2. Later on, we're going to talk about some other things as well, besides staffing. We looked at your station. We'll talk about that in just a little bit, as far as some of the deficiencies we filed there. And we're certainly advocating for you to give these men and women the type of facility they need to do their job professionally. And then, finally, we looked at the rising cost to providing what's called advanced life support services. It's a challenge that every fire service is having around the area. Very quickly, hospital-based advanced life support was the forte of most of eastern Massachusetts through the 80s and 90s. I know in your area, the Plymouth Hospital had an ALS or a paramedic unit that used to respond into this area. Those hospitals across the state have gotten out of that business, so they left communities with options of either utilizing a private service, as I understand it, you did that for a while, for ALS calls, or taking care of yourself, okay? So, again, what you're attempting to do here is to, and I commend you for it, to have a licensed paramedic on duty, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, so you can stand up an ALS service. But, that costs money, and it also means that these individuals who perform very complex life-saving skills, and they're working with drugs, medications, narcotics, and so forth, that itself can become costly, and that itself has a whole set of regulatory requirements associated with it. Number one. So, let's talk about the call force. It's a general problem across this state, across the United States. We found it further complicated by when we looked at your roster, these folks that were listed as called firefighters might have addresses that were 10 or 15 or more miles away from the community. Nobody's questioning their dedication, but quite frankly, when you need a response, you do it. So, as you'll see, that we certainly feel that every member on the department is a valued member, but I think you need to strongly recruit called firefighters within your community that would be there for you. Let's see. Recruitment and retention. Fortunately, there is some help out there. The federal government realizes that for the vast majority of this United States, volunteers or called firefighters, August's first response is to protect small communities. There is something called SAFER grants, okay? That's an acronym that stands for Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response. Federal money that's available to help both recruit and retain firefighters. That program's been up and running for about 17 years or so. A lot of small communities like yours across this state as well as across the country have reached out and been successful in obtaining those grants. But, we also need to make sure that people understand, people want to belong to an organization that's squared away. People want to understand exactly what their role, as well as their responsibility is going to be within an organization. Ultimately, all of your firefighters are your employees, okay? They are employees of the town of Plimpton. They're compensated, compensated very modestly. They're also, you know, we also have to look over them, so that if they are injured in some way, you know, you and the taxpayers are responsible for all of that. Finally, we were asked to investigate why there was such a high turnover rate. We see it from time to time. Quite honestly, normally, the high, the number-one reason we see people say, "How come I left the fire department?", was because the level of commitment that was needed. In a modern called fire department today, you know, we're drilling at least a couple of times a month. "We need you down at the station. We have a structured program. Oh, by the way, you've got to go off to Plymouth County or to the Commonwealth and get your firefighter 1-2. Oh, by the way, we'd like you to be an EMT, if not a paramedic." For the men and women to do that sort of stuff, I can't tell you how much they pour out, but a lot of folks at some point say, "No, that's not, I can't continue to do this." I'd like to say that of the 50 people, of those that we interviewed, that they all just said, "I just can't keep up the level of commitment." But, some of those other issues that I spoke of earlier were driving factors in why they chose to leave the organization. The firefighter 1-2 training, I've already talked about, but basically, at the time that we looked at it, it was about 50% of the force. I'll also say, I understand that prior to submitting our report, there was internal efforts by folks to get going, you know? I've heard that, "Hey, we've been doing a lot of stuff in the last six months." I commend you for it. The snapshot of time that we took at our study was done in October and November. Later on, I'll talk to this organization and say, "You know what? You've got to celebrate your accomplishments, but you also have to look at where your shortcomings are honestly and work forward. We all have to get better." Nobody wants to present a false sense of security or place somebody's libel. One of the concerns I had, we were here one day when there was a nominative shift, in which two individuals were working, who had a very strong EMS background, but virtually no fire background. They were your initial response force. So, the questioning, again, went something to the effect of, "So, what do you do when a firefight comes in? Do you take the ambulance? Do you drive the fire truck there and hope that others will come and assist you?" And, one individual looked at me, and I could sense that individual's angst, and I said, "Chief, I hope it never happens, you know, that I have to make a tough call." And I understood exactly what that person was telling me, but I also had to tell you that that, I don't want to see people like that put in harm's way, nor do you, okay? We need to protect those that protect us. Again, this is a quick chat. I'm going to try to move along. I know I've already spoken much too long, but this is an analysis as far as what we looked at. The numbers that are shown in red represent the percentage of time in which both of the people that were on duty were actually certified firefighters. The number in blue represents the times at least that there was one of the two individuals who was a licensed paramedic, so that we could provide advanced life support. We took a look at four snapshots, starting in February, finishing up in November. You'll notice back in February of 17, 85% of the time, the fire station was staffed, it was a paramedic on duty, okay? It's good, but it's not good enough. The state says they want to see that within the 90 percentile in order to keep the license. 39% of the time, those two people were both qualified as firefighters. The paramedic coverage actually gets much better. It goes from 85 to 91 to 93, and then finally, to 97. So, by November of last fall, 97%, at 3% hour service rate, not bad. Your license is not injected, okay? It can happen, okay, in a small community. That's pretty gosh darn good. But, if you look, unfortunately, the numbers start to really drop off as far as people that are qualified as firefighters. And again, we were asked to look at that. And again, I mentioned how difficult it is to have one individual that can do both. That is not what we saw. Let's move along to facilities and equipment. We quickly learned that your station does not currently meet the needs of the community. The community made, a community decision some time ago, to put on a staff 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They now are still living in a temporary housing assignment. What we look at is that cradle that's out there really, honestly, isn't meant to be a long-term solution to providing adequate and safe living quarters for firefighters. So, it's going to compel the community to say, "You know what? Just on that one issue alone, you know, if we're going to continue to staff our firehouse, we need to provide permanent living quarters that are safe." The station itself is extremely crowded, built, I think, back in the 70s, if I'm not mistaken. At that time, clearly, I think the vision in '75 or whenever it was, I don't think anybody could ever envision that we'd be in a full-time situation, we'd be the community's EMS provider at the advanced life support level, we'd have a full-time chief, you know, we'd have some day staff. So, things are compressed. We look at your community's service. You don't have a water supply system, so of course, you need to carry the water to the fire. That means big apparatus, tankers, trucks that are bigger in scale. Your community is predominantly a rural community. You have a lot of brush area where outside fires require specialized equipment. So, you have two pieces of apparatus that are called brush breakers, so you need that as well. You service major highways, and part of patient care is not only EMS treatment, but rescue, extrication, and so forth. So, all of that sort of gets shoved into a box that's already too small. You'll see in our report that we talked about the importance of planning for the future and looking at an adequate station. One concern that we really had was the lack of a vehicle exhaust system. Fire apparatus for the most part is diesel. When those trucks start up and operate with inside of a building, or any combustible engine operates inside of a building, it creates toxic fumes. The walls in that building are porous in nature, so even after the truck starts and the fan turns on, those particulates are still there. Occupational cancer in the fire service has exploded, and it's not because we're going to a whole bunch more fires, because we're dealing with a lot more toxic materials and including situations where we're regularly exposed, or people that you're paying to have on the farm are regularly exposed to this. So, one of the things we would strongly advocate for is that you install a vehicle exhaust system. Again, there's federal money available for that through what's called the Assistant Firefighters' Grant. Just a couple of quick questions, pictures rather. This one over here on the left, what you can't make out here is this is actually a pressure vessel. This is a compressed air tank, and it's a matter of about two inches between that second ambulance backing into it. There's a ballad here, which I'm glad to find, but I just wanted to show you guys some of the concerns that we saw as far as how tight the quarters were. The rising cost to providing ALS services, and again, we were asked to do a cost analysis. Right now, on average, on average, over the last four or five years, for the ambulance transports that you do, you are engaged with a company called Comstock. They do the billing on behalf of the tenant, so they bill the insurance company. That's a very complex process. In order to do that, they take back about 5.5% of what is collected. That's pretty much standard. Some volume folks can do better than that, but you're not doing bad. What do we bill at? The standard rate is Medicare, okay? If you know anything about Medicare rates, you know they're artificially low. Right now, the Commonwealth currently allows ambulance providers as far as emergency care to provide what they feel is a reasonable rate. You are currently billing at Medicare plus 300%. You are at the top of the scale of any public provider that I know of in this Commonwealth. So, what I'm trying to say is, as we look at the cost and the revenue, we knew that you were collecting your revenue as much as aggressively as you could. You were charging as aggressively as you could. So, you're getting in as much money as you can. I'm not sure, just on that rate, quite frankly, whether that will remain sustainable. That's really up to the legislature. There's been huge pushback by the insurance industry in this state. Fire Troops Association of Mass would tell you that we came that close this past summer to being imposed with Medicare plus 165%. So, in other words, your revenue might have cut much as close to 50%. And that revenue goes to, by your statutes here in town, it goes first to the coffers, okay? It goes to an ambulance account. That account is regularly taxed or used to offset the cost of running your fire department. I believe this year, about a quarter of a million dollars is offset in that direction. Interestingly enough about that, you're starting to give the fire department more every year than the fire department's taking in. Last year, you had a great year. You came in at 283. The year before that, I think it was 190. It's gone from 185. We looked at how that billing cycle works, because some years, quite honestly, you get a big check right at the end of the year, and our projection is that we think that you're going to see roughly in the area of $200,000 to $225,000 a year continue to come in, based on the call volume you have. We anticipate your call volume's not going to go up a lot. We don't see your population going up a lot. The age of your population will go up, and we've seen those folks that are ALS providers know that for non-traumatic ALS, yeah, we're going to do some of that. But, even with all of that, we're starting to take more out of the piggy bank than we're putting in every year. putting in every year. The plan was with the advanced life, with the ambulance service, that we pay not only help offset salaries, but also defer capital costs associated with the equipment that we need. Right now, a decent Class I emergency ambulance costs somewhere in the area of between $200,000 and $250,000. In a smaller community, you might get as much as 10 years out of that. But that still means that we need to set aside money so that we're not all of a sudden hitting the taxpayers up with that type of huge capital expense. So the recommendation was that $36,000 a year, every year, be set aside so that when we need a new ambulance, not just the ambulance, but the stretchers, the equipment, all of the products that we use, whether they're consumables or whether they're tangibles, we need to do that. And we did a projection, it's in the report, but unfortunately, it shows that we become insolvent as far as that fund, that rainy day account, basically runs out. Peter, help me out, was that in 2022?
2023.
2023, I'm sorry. We've worked with the Duxbury Emergency Communications Center to get data relative to your response times, to the calls that you go to. For the folks in the room that don't know this, the way both police and fire dispatch in this community is through a, I don't use the word regional, but it's a shared service between several communities run out of Duxbury. So we asked them for, because it was a mandate to us, how are we doing as far as response times? And I apologize again for this small pie chart, but basically what it represents is we've taken everything up to 10 minutes or longer. There's a standard for, and it's stated right there, that when somebody's having a serious medical emergency, any type of a medical emergency in which they want the ambulance, that it's reasonable, particularly in a staffed firehouse, to expect that within six minutes of that call, somebody got their door. You have 15.2 square miles of rural roadways. We know that there are some anomalies. We will take longer than six minutes, maybe longer than eight. But this is the current level right now, and again, without going into all the individuals, you see the pie charts kind of split halfway. All of this represents where we did it in less than six minutes, but all of this represents where it took longer, okay? So we questioned that. I'll also say, and I'm the first to admit, that sometimes the way the data is recorded, work as a chief, but look, dispatches put down response times that aren't accurate. We need accurate information. We interpolated the information that we were provided, and this stood out to us as troubling. It may have been because in some situations, either the ambulance was out or the station wasn't staffed that night. I really don't know. So let's talk about our recommendations. Again, we hope the report will be a source of conversation. There are 50 recommendations in this. MRI has probably done 100 studies of this type.
A little well over that.
Yeah. And typically, what we find as we come in, nobody has ever said, "Every one of these is great, we're going to embrace them, we're going to do them all." Typically, what we'll get is guy like these, these, and these. That's a nice-to-have. That's ridiculous, we'll never get there. Or we know better than you," and you do. This is not my community, this is your community. But take and look at each one of those. I think we've tried to be clear and objective with those. Recruitment retention, we've already talked about. We hope that you'll develop a formal, ongoing, and we're looking at call people. To be very clear to all of you in the back of the room, I am not, MRI is not advocating whatsoever to turn this into a career fire department and somehow think that we could ever get away without having people on call to respond to our needs. That's ludicrous. There's nothing in the report that suggests that, just the opposite. We're saying that you'll always need a cadre of dedicated men and women to do this job, and they're going to have to come from your community. So we need to get out there and recruit those folks. Talked about safer earlier. We talked about focusing on people that are within the community. Yes, you have many folks on your department right now that are dedicated, that are, in some cases, coming in and working your shift, but their place of residence is not proximate to where the response is. Okay. Training and certification, just very quickly, I want to touch on that. Fortunately for all of you, firefighter 1-2 training in this Commonwealth is absolutely free, plain and simple. There's never been a penny charge by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts at its recruit programs. Plymouth County, the Plymouth County chiefs are very active in this area, and they offer an ongoing call-ball program that points individuals or brings individuals towards Beyond the basic training, the department has to invest in itself, and the community has to invest in its department to make sure that you have a continuing path of professional development, not only for the firefighters and the EMS learning their basic operational skills, but for the men and the women that supervise them. So we're pointing people towards preparing people for promotion. You know, we did notice, when we reviewed the personnel jackets, that in some cases, individuals possessed certifications and had gone through fire training courses, courses in supervision and management and leadership. We advocate very heavily for that to continue. It's a power military organization. Everybody needs to put their hands on the fire or the EMS, but we expect that people that will supervise a fire department will be able to administer it effectively, to manage it effectively, to understand what it is like to be a leader and to keep order and to maintain all of that. So we talked about implementing a formal standard that provides a minimum number of training personnel. 72 hours per year, we think is a reasonable investment. We saw that many people, as we reviewed training records, many people were coming back to monthly drills, but some people had said, "You know what, I stopped going to drills." And we questioned that. And one of the things we heard was, unfortunately, was there was no established curriculum. We get there and figure out what we wanted to do as opposed to what we needed to do. Chiefs know this, that there's a lot of funny stuff, but it's just like the Patriots up the street. You got to review the basics. You got to make sure that everybody's comfortable and everybody's safe. Response times, we talked about that before. We believe that you folks should put an internal benchmark in, have the first unit responding within one minute going out the door in a career situation. It's not unreasonable to say that people are in the fire station, the apparatus is on the road within 60 seconds of the call coming in. And that we'd like to see that 90% of the time, first unit's on the road and that they're at the scene within eight minutes in the time the call comes in. Areas that are within two miles of the station, you'd probably do that in less time. We advocate very strongly that the town, Plimpton, should move towards a space needs analysis of the fire department. I noticed that your community, and commend you for that, has a standing public safety committee, and I understand that you're awarding bids for the construction of a police station, which is going to be in this general area. And we advocate that that committee stay in place and that they start to look at what the fire department needs, whether that's a renovation of the existing building or whether there's some other alternatives. We're really not prepared to say. We did make some recommendations in there about right sizing the department's apparatus for the most part. We found that you were. We did find some surplus equipment that, quite honestly, we'd probably more expected to maintain than there was really a demand for it. That's in the body of the report. We most strongly advocate that you do not move to privatize your EMS service, whether you stay at the advanced level or go back to the basic level. We believe that the community has already invested in itself. We did ask the chief at the time to reach out to private ambulance providers within the area to get a bid for what it would cost for a dedicated advanced life support truck to be committed to Plymouth, ah, to Plimpton, I'm sorry. That price came back from Brewster Ambulance at three quarters of a million dollars. That's more than what your fire department cost you right now. Your annual fire department budget for the total fire department was $742. That private service estimated would cost $750 for them to come over and take up the EMS. So we don't see that. You may have some opportunities in front of you as you explore, or it's your decision, if you decide to explore shared service. And that means that you might work with other ALS providers in the area or other EMS providers to help supplement what you're already doing. So we will, in a second here, say to you that yes, based on what we saw in our interviews, looking at the town's needs, talking to Plimpton, talking to Halifax, that was, we were only asked, is there any, you know, is there any sense, is there any viability in looking a little further into ours? And if you read our reports, we say, do so with caution, but to turn a blind eye to that, or say, ah, we don't need it, that was not what we saw, okay? Also became a concern, and it was brought to my attention just a week ago, how come MRI didn't reach out to Carver or Kingsville or to, I know Pembroke and Middleboro are less budding than the ones that I've mentioned? As I mentioned in the report, we were directed specifically towards Halifax. As I understand it, that was because preliminary discussion had already started between those communities. I would recommend to the board that you continue to explore shared services, and you invite anybody who's willing to talk about those types of collaborative efforts you take. So it has to be well thought out, we talked about that. To attain success, you've got to have a realistic timeframe. These are not handshake agreements. This is not something you're going to put in place next year. As far as the legalities of all of that, yes, you're going to have to, if you decide to look at this beyond the 94 questions that we gave you, you could answer through meetings with the community. Basically, you're a contract for service, like any other agreement that you enter into, two parties enter into. There should be a term. Things should be reduced to writing, okay? And there should be a means in which you can sever that agreement if it's not working out. So there's nothing in our report that says this is a done deal. There's nothing in our report that says this is the only alternative. What is in our report is a report that clearly points out that many communities are looking at this as an alternative, and we have provided you, as instructed, with foundational questions, 94 of them, that your leaders should ask any other community, not just Halifax, if you're looking in that direction. We know you have some challenges, and I think we've outlined them. I'm not going to go any further than that. We strongly advocate that the Board of Selectmen and its town administrator take an active role in all of this. This is really a community issue. This is not just a fire department issue, okay? This is a concern of all communities. Community has expectations. You know, everybody's a taxpayer, myself included, not in this community, but back home. I want to make sure that I understand what I'm getting. I have to have reasonable expectations, and the community has to convey to me, this is what we can provide, this is what we can't do. I hope that all of you that are from outside the fire department will read the report, you get a better understanding about who your fire department is. For the guys, the men and the women on the job, I advocate for you folks to get out there and talk about who you are, what you do, and all the good stuff you do, because I think, quite honestly, as retired fire chief, that's one thing we kind of don't do a good job at. We don't tell the public everything we do. We don't just fight fires, okay? We just don't go over on emergency calls. Yeah, we mentioned that we think there are opportunities there. Not only you're going to look at, yes, you're going to look at cost, but you also have to look at the services associated with it. So it's long-term development for the organization. There are 50 recommendations in the report itself. We asked you to look at each one as a goal, decide which ones have priority, reject the ones that you do not feel that are appropriate. When you do achieve, by setting these as goals, then you can celebrate your accomplishment. You know, when the Plimpton Fire Department has a much higher level of certified firefighters, that doesn't need to be anybody's secret, that needs to be out there on the town's website. And that can be individual achievements, too. When somebody has completed not only fire training, but they've provided, completed training and supervision and leadership and so forth, that needs to get out there. Guys, be proud and blow your own gillbock, recognize each accomplishment. So in all, it's up to you. We believe that we have satisfied our contractual agreement with the town. We have submitted to the town what we believe is a comprehensive report that addressed those six items in scope and giving you frank and honest answers. What you do with that, you own that now. It could be a roadmap for you as far as moving forward, and it's really up to you. And just very quickly, as I close up, for those of you that would like to know more about who municipal resources are, I invite you to go to our website, which is up there on the board. We'll talk about the services that we provide in public safety, but also in municipal governance. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, we're ready to open it up to questions. Anybody have questions for Bob? No one has any questions?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, Andrew.
My name's Andrew Norton, I'm a member of the department, I'm also a resident of 59 Mayflower Road. Mr. Loomer, you made reference to I-1-2 certification, correct?
Yes, I did.
But you didn't include, you only include certification, you didn't include training up to that certification, correct? In other words, firefighters that may have 39 years of service, 15 years of non-certified I-1-2, you didn't include them in that matrix, correct?
If I can, I'll respond to the question, and great question. The measure that we use today in the fire service as far as professional qualification is just that. That's established nationwide, by the way, just as so as somebody's licensed as an EMT or a paramedic. Difference being, and I want to be straightforward with Mr. Norton, he raises a good question. You can't get in that ambulance unless you've got an EMT license or a paramedic license. Yes, there are. Firefighters, I'll give you a perfect example. You're looking at him, okay? But back in the day, when I joined the fire service in 1968, there was no such a thing, okay? So for many people, myself included, who had already gone up through the ranks, that chose individually, or in some cases, the department mandated, that you prove your qualifications. So today, I'm a firefighter 1-2, and that's really the foundation of the entire fire service. I'm also qualified as an instructor, an officer, an investigator, and a whole bunch of other stuff, but that's the foundation. So sometimes it's hard. I will tell you that not too many years ago, well, four years ago, I had the privilege of testing district fire chiefs in the city of Boston for firefighter 1-2 qualifications. Now, I'm talking specifically to the rank and file here. You know what a district or a deputy does. They've got a darn good job to do, a down-and-forth job. They're probably not driving a hose line, they're probably not going on SCBA, but they're supervising men and women that have to do that. So in that case, the city of Boston, together with the firefighters locals, said, "You know what? We want to achieve that certification." That's a voluntary move that they made. I would encourage people in the fire service that have veterans like yourself, Mr. Loomer, to think about the fact that although, you know, we learn as we went, all of us that have a little gray hair, to get to that standard. Going forward, chiefs today know that when people come in, you know, it's an accepted standard. So the anticipation should be to a young man, a young woman who aspires So the anticipation should be to a young man, a young woman who aspires to be a structural firefighter in this year, that yes, that's going to be the metric that should really help them.
Well, I give Fire 12, but what, did you look, did you get a count on the number of personnel at the fire department that aren't Fire 12, but have years, significant years of experience?
We did in this report look at everybody's years of experience, but the single metric that we took, so I want to be clear here, that as we looked at that staffing, okay, overnight staffing, we said, okay, who's an EMT, yes or no? Who's a paramedic, yes or no? Who's a firefighter 12 certified? And that, those licenses and those qualifications were provided to us by the fire chief at the time and one of his lieutenants, who provided that information. I understand exactly what you're saying, Mr. Norton, there is no substitute for experience, okay? Having been a fire chief myself, I'll say, okay, great, you just got your certification, so you know your basics, but son or young lady, there's so much more to learn, so, but we do have to look at a metric, and that metric is the qualification, all right? I hope that satisfies.
All right. In the back.
I have a question for you, sir.
Hey, come up to the podium, please, and announce your name.
Can't wait. David Smith, 88 Upland Road, former CERT coordinator, thank you very much for nothing. Are you no longer qualified because of your age?
David, you need, actually, questions need to be directed to us, and I should have corrected you to, Andrew.
All right, we can do it again. Want me to walk back or try it again?
No, no, I didn't hear your question.
Oh, you didn't hear the question. Is he no longer available to be a firefighter because of his age? Is he no longer, is he aged out, so he's not qualified? He just said he was firefighter 1 and 2. I thought there was an age requirement on this. Maybe you guys can help me.
That, actually, Mr.
I'm happy to disclose my age. By the way, next week, on March 29th, I'll be 66 years of age. Please send me a card.
Okay, Erv.
To clarify the gentleman's remark, and I think you're spot on, yes, I am now past the age of 65, so as much as I was re-qualified, you said you were Fire 1 and 2, so I'm going to correct that for the record.
For the record.
He's not qualified as a firefighter.
Okay, so I was qualified as a firefighter, firefighter 12, that certification is there. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts, through its retirement laws, say that no individual in the Commonwealth, and let me clarify that further, if I'm wanting to, there are actually 34 states in this country where, since I have a national certification, including state of New York, and I finished in Jersey, thank you, where I could serve, okay? But I don't think that's the issue here as far as my service. Well, I hope that clarifies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Irving Butler, we live in Maple Street, the retired deputy chief of the Celestrious Fire Department. One of the things, going back several years, and the Commonwealth decided that they wouldn't pay, we had to pay for training. We used to have a system where we gave the guys a stipend at the end of the year for coming to drills, that worked fairly well. But now every minute of training has to be paid for, so, and the other thing is, call firefighters, most of them have a full-time job someplace, and getting them firefighter 1 and 2 trained is not a simple thing to do. You have to, they don't want to go to Massachusetts to the training, they can't, they have to stay home and do their job, and to get them trained locally, it takes, I don't know what the hours they are now, but probably there's a couple of days a week, couple of nights a week, and a Saturday to do it. These people are not, don't have the time nowadays to do these things. We used to train them, I went to training in 1971, I went down to Lakeville, two nights a week and all day Saturday when I first came out of the department. I've been to firefighter, Massachusetts firefighting classes, I've got the whole portfolio of things that I have done, but we trained most of our people in-house. They couldn't drive until they were trained how to drive the things, they couldn't be a pump operator until they'd been pump-trained, you know, putting in the air packs, we put them in scot packs and drag them through dark places, we built up places in the built stations so they could crawl through, not see anything, we use artificial smoke to train them, and most of the guys, when I was in the department, were trained locally, and most of them did a fine job. Getting them to firefighter 1 and 2 nowadays for call department is not an easy thing to do. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? Saw some hands up. All right, sir, why don't you come on up?
Peter McGaragall, 15 Crescent Street, just had a question for MRI. I didn't know if you could tell us what the target is for 12 firefighter classification for towns, and also what percentage of towns in Massachusetts hit that target?
Whoa. Sorry. Great question. Again, I want to clarify that the standard across the country, not only Massachusetts, has become firefighter 12 qualification, standard of care, not law, okay? I could not tell you quantitatively in this city, in this state, of the 351 cities and towns, you know, how many firefighters have met that, what the town's objectives are. I can tell you that many departments today, as far as new hires, will set that as a standard. I know that the Massachusetts Firefighting Academy provides training that prepares an individual for certification testing. You should understand that two separate entities, EMTs and paramedics, understand you receive training, and then you, after that training, that prepares you to be tested, so to speak, or qualified. I happen to also be closely associated with the state's recruit programs, as well as the call firefighting and training programs. We do the training, separate from that comes the test, you need to train to get to that test. As the deputy mentioned, that's not easy as far as commitment. I do want to make one correction to the deputy, I wasn't on the force back in 1971, but I have been with the academy since 1977. I can clearly and emphatically tell you that there is no cost to go to the academy. Some communities may choose, may choose to pay or compensate their individuals that attend academy courses. Individuals, many individuals in the fire service, through their personal commitment, will go and take a fire academy course out of pocket, that's a personal decision. What I believe this deputy was bringing to everybody's point, and it's an important point, it's a good point, indemnify, in hands-on training, and the Commonwealth was quite clear on this, let's say that your firefighter is sent over to Plymouth County to take a 12 program, or structural firefighting program, and something happens to that individual, they're injured in training, it is really no different than if they were injured in service of protecting you, there's an obligation to the community. So yes, that cost is there, and I hope they understand, but no, I cannot tell you, I know of many career fire departments that have said, not only will you pass the Massachusetts Firefighting Academy successfully, but you'll also get your qualification, and sometimes it's in contractual agreements, sometimes that's in rules and regulations, and yes, I would say that there is a, mostly the older folks in the fire service, remember certification's been around since about the mid-1990s, about 28, 27 years, so certainly those of us that have been around a little bit longer than that, were there before those training standards were put in place. Some folks, some folks went back and got that training, other departments said, you know what, you've already demonstrated these skills. Thank you.
If I could add, just a little bit more on the train, a couple of things, and again, I've been around for almost 40 years now, you know, the business of firefighting, much like EMS, has gotten much, much more technical and complex over the years. So what we used to be able to do more in-house 40 years ago, all right, is much more of a challenge today, and we understand that's a challenge. But the other thing that's changed over that time also, is that we've become an extremely litigious society, all right? There, I hope there's no lawyers in this room, but there's more lawyers, okay? There's more lawyers in the United States than there are firefighters, and that's total firefighters, call and volunteer, and I believe that there's about a million firefighters in the United States, and there's more lawyers than that. So we've become an extremely litigious society, and unfortunately, one of the things that goes along with a litigious society is, show me the paper, show me the paper. So this gentleman here, Mr. Norton, was it?
Yes.
You know, he has a lot of years of experience, but if something happens, they may be looking for that piece of paper, and unfortunately, that years of experience doesn't always count anymore, okay? And again, for better or for worse, that's the society that we live in today. So that's why the training has really become such of an important hot-button issue, and again, not just here in Plymouth County, not just in Massachusetts, but across the
Barbara Callahan of 10 Heathers Path in Plimpton. First of all, thank you so much for your service, I know your job is not easy, so I say thank you very much. So now that you have the.
Want to get a little bit closer to the mic?
So now that you have the report, could you please tell us the sequence of events that led to last Monday night in your vote, and where do we go now, from now?
Well, that is actually outside the scope of what we're going to be discussing tonight.
Well, obviously, I work for Cisco Foods. Thanks, I know a few faces here, so I guess our concern would be the response times. What I do for Cisco is I do the ammonia refrigeration. When I have to go to respond to this, I want to know if I get that backup. What I saw is the response times up there and the, what you got for your response times, everything they had with you, all that, all that information, but I don't see Carver's. I don't see their response times, what's it going to take for them to get out here, and how safe I'm going to be with that decision?
You mean Halifax?
Halifax.
Or actually, any.
Halifax.
Okay.
I'm curious as to that, because that's my life safety as well, and everybody that works up at Cisco, which is approximately 930 people, so it's a big portion of people here in this community as well. So we like what we've done, the response times that we've seen from this group, it's been great, and the help.
Thank you, Dave.
So I'm curious just to know that.
Well, that's not a question that we can answer tonight, but that's definitely something that we need to look at. Andrew?
Just want to make a statement, we questioned the response times as well, the accuracy of them. We checked on three major incidents in the last month. One was on 33, the day after the storm, it was West Street, it came as a structured fire, it actually ended up being a chimney fire. We checked with Rock this morning, told us it took us 27 minutes to get there, and I was blown away because I was on the first responding engine. What happened was, it actually took us two minutes to get there, when we dug further, they went back and they listened to the tapes. What actually happened was, the call came in, chief went out, I went out with another firefighter on engine one, we were there within two minutes. Engine two was tied up on another call on the other side of town. They were the ones that showed up 25 minutes later. The tanker showed up a minute after we did. So we had a fully staffed contingent of six firefighters plus the chief on scene within two minutes. Another incident, fire came in as a chimney fire back in January, call came in at 5:02 in the morning, we were on scene at 5:08, again, with six firefighters and the chief. Motor vehicle accident up on Route 106, where the occupant was pulled from the car by police, she was unresponsive in cardiac arrest. Call came in at 1419, we were on scene at 1424. So we, as a department, have some real concerns about the accuracy of the response times. We take pride in getting out the door as quickly and efficiently as possible, and I don't believe that's reflected in that pie chart.
And I commend, Mr. Norton, for your concern. As a fire chief, I'd be as concerned. I'm not trying to pass the buck here, but we can only post the data that we receive from the rock, and for folks in the back of the room, I'm sorry, for the folks in the back of the room, the rock refers to the communications center, so all of those times are recorded, that's the data that we see. As a fire department, as fire department leadership, normally what we do is we review all of the data that comes back from our communications center. If it's erroneous, then it needs to be corrected. But again, we, I think, Peter, how, what was your data points, you had about a year's worth?
I think it was a year.
That's all it worth, okay?
Actually, no, no, actually, it was several years, I believe.
Was several years.
I believe it was, yeah.
Yeah, and again, it could be that it's, quite honestly, that it's data that's screwy, and there's data that nobody's been checking, okay? So if that's the case, then, you know, obviously, for the department's leadership, I would, you know, take that data that we were given, go back and say, that doesn't jive, okay? Because we know we're a data-driven society today, and yeah, I will tell you that when I look at the data that we receive, Peter actually did the analysis, but when I looked at it real quick, I said, this isn't making sense, but this is, these are the numbers that we were presented.
And we questioned it, I mean, you know, I questioned Bob and Bob about it, you know, because there were some numbers on there that didn't seem right. But again, I said, you know, not to beat the dead horse, but, you know, that's one of the things that the fire department, moving forward, probably needs to keep a look or a track on, on a monthly basis, and if you see numbers that are kind of outliers like that, you know, get to the bottom of it. Was it an issue where we were tied up on multiple incidents, or was it something where they made a mistake, they didn't, you know, input the data properly or something like that? The other thing that to keep in mind is, when you talk about small minute response times, four minutes, six minutes, eight minutes, if you don't utilize the seconds, so for instance, if right now, it is, what, 7:30, so it's 1928, what is it, 06, okay? If you just put 1928, and then when you arrive on location, you put 1935 or whatever, you can have almost a two-minute difference in what that time could be, okay? By putting the seconds in there in those response times, gives you a much finer picture of what your actual response time is going to be, gives you, it paints a much more accurate picture for you.
Okay, I just, we did get a question about what the next step was, and the next step for us would be to set up an advisory committee to look at the study and determine what the next steps are. So that, that would be the next step for us. Any more questions? All right, so seeing no more questions, can we, we can probably excuse you guys, thank you very much, and move to our next business, and that is, Chief Corrin is going to be presenting Kimberly DeWolfe, we'll be appointing her as the full-time firefighter paramedic, and I believe you're going to be making a presentation.
Yes.
Perfect.
We can help out?
All right, so I will make a motion that we appoint Kimberly DeWolfe to the Plimpton Fire Department, full-time paramedic until June 30th of 2018. Do we have a second?
Six.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I'd like to introduce our newest full-time member, Kimberly DeWolfe. If you come up here, Kim. Give you a little background on Kim, Kim's been an EMT since 2003, a medic since 2010. She's worked in some tough areas, Roxbury, Dorchester, she's worked for Boston EMS as an ALS provider for roughly eight years. She also has ACLS, PAL, SIBO, Urban Shield twice over, she also has, she's also had a save in the last month, being on duty. And what do you mean by that, a reversal, someone that was actually dead, she's brought him back, so, she's done her job. She's also completed firefighter 1-2 recently, and she's also completed pump ops training from one of the toughest instructors I've ever met. And so I want to welcome her, and I want you guys all to welcome her.
Can I take a hand? Congratulations, thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah, can we get a picture for the paper?
Oh, yeah. Turn just a little, right there. Now you can smile. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, folks, we're going to move on to much less exciting business, so if you'd like, you can all go on to do something else if you'd like, otherwise we can continue. The next is, we've got police station contract documents.
We don't have that yet.
Okay, all right.
It was on the agenda in case it was ready, and it's not ready.
Okay, why don't we take a five-minute recess? All right. Okay. All right, so next item on our agenda is the earth removal. Oh, we're back in, right? Yeah. He's so on top of it, he knows.
Are we doing earth removal?
No, we're not going to do the earth removal, we're not ready to do the earth removal. We're going to do that next week.
Brian Wick will be in next week, we're inviting other ag-type people in, we'll be able to have the discussion, I think we'll be able to put a placeholder on. We're just racing to see if we can get this done. And I just want to acknowledge here, and as we've acknowledged in other places, all the work that Amy and Linda did to get it this far. We hope we can get it done, whether we can or not is just still open to question.
We're going to do that if we can. So I had mentioned that Rick Burnett was going to work with Brian Wick some more this weekend on that red line, and then get it to us. We haven't seen anything yet, but as soon as we do, Linda and I will work on that and try to incorporate it as soon as we possibly can.
And we appreciate that, and especially because you guys are the ones that have immersed yourself in it and understand it, and if we can get it done in an appropriate way, we'll do it, if not, we'll just keep working on it.
Great, thank you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Amy.
Okay.
Annual town meeting preparation?
I haven't had a chance to read your, wait.
I know.
There were a few things that I had to read.
No, no, but that's the annual report.
That's the annual report.
All right, so you brought that up, so we might as well-
All right. Well, do you guys want to just think about it?
I had a chance to look at it, I made a few editing suggestions that you can take or absolutely throw away. I think this is a masterful report, and your efforts are much appreciated.
All right, thank you.
So they're my suggestions.
All right, why don't I incorporate Mark's suggestions, resend it to you, you can take a look at it. Bree, what's the deadline to get this report to you? Today? Tonight?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Until next week.
Okay. Yeah, I'll have it to you, we'll have it to you by the end of the week, by Thursday.
I'll do it, we have a couple of work today, so.
Okay, thank you very much, okay. So I'll send that to you. All right, anything else? We don't have anything else for town meeting right now to talk about, right?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay. All right, so town report was the next item.
Warrant.
Okay.
There is that article that was submitted by an outside person?
Oh, the zoning? Yeah, that has to go to Planning Board for public hearing, so that's taking care of the advertisements and everything.
Yeah, I thought we needed some plans with it and everything?
Yeah, the engineer has done a plan and a description of the law, and so we're going to have-
Just so we don't have the last minute.
That information will be available at the Planning Board office, and also at the town clerk's office, just to make sure that we're in compliance with everything.
Perfect.
Are we getting near the point that maybe a draft of the articles, wherever you're at, that we begin to look at?
So to be honest, I was going to mention during my update, I haven't received very many articles yet. A very low number of articles. I have the ones that you sent, obviously I have the zoning ones in place, I have one or two from Pat Dillon, and John Willamson gave me some. Nothing else yet. I was going to work on the draft later this week, and more so on Monday, and then, you know, maybe I'll send something else out tomorrow or Wednesday.
Yeah, because we're closing next Monday, right?
It's supposed to close Monday, but I haven't received much. So I was going to put a call in to make it in common, just kind of see where things are at. Because the days are going by, and I think honestly with all these storms, and I think people are just a little, like, losing track of time. We're almost to the end of the month.
Yeah, I think it sounds like a good idea to send out a reminder.
Yeah, just send out a reminder, and say, you know, as per our local bylaws, the closing date is then. If you need a placeholder and you don't quite have the text put together yet that's suitable, just please give us something so that we can start establishing-
That's the key, is they just have to have a placeholder.
I do have a draft document, like, in Word, I have last year's final version, and so I'm already, like, cutting and pasting.
Because there's a bunch that are just boilerplate, every year.
Right, right.
Right, and I'm going to sit with Barbara to go over some of those, because a lot of them are her financial ones also too, for the special town meeting. So she and I have a plan too, that we're going to sit down and-
Okay, great.
Okay, terrific.
I'm sorry, sending an email out to everybody? Yeah. You? Yeah.
Okay, how about your report, Town Administrator's Report?
Regent Personnel Board Meeting was canceled due to the snow, so they are going to reschedule either later this week or first thing next week. They don't have anything earth-shattering, but a few articles that they're planning, like, changes to the bylaw. So I'll get the final text for those and submit it to this board so that you have a chance to look at it. Nothing major, a couple minor changes to different provisions in the act. And then as far as my update, it's just, it's been very busy lately, you know, working on the warrant and all the other things that we have going on, so with that, I was just going to move into response.
Perfect.
Our first thing, we have an audit letter from Lynch and Marini. Barbara Gomez has already signed. I'm receiving this today, the finalized hard copy, so there is a spot for Christine to sign, and then it looks like there's also a spot for Colleen Moran to sign when she comes back. So I have that here.
Thank you.
And it looks like Barbara tabbed where you signed the last page.
So we're signing, accepting this report, or?
This is the initial audit, connection with your audits.
Yeah, so it's the initial report, and then another thing we had talked about was for, this is what the information that we need to send to kind of complete their package. So it's not their final audit, it's something that's on town letterhead that we're sending them, that kind of confirms some different things for the town, as far as financial statements and that sort of thing.
The last page says that we're confirming that they've disclosed the things they need to disclose.
Once Colleen is back, she was here for a little while tonight, so it's good to get to see her. Once she's back, I believe her and Barbara were going to talk to Grady, to the auditor, and see if he could come into this board and just give a little overview of the audit and some of their findings, and kind of summarize it for us. So I think that that would be helpful for all of us, just to know where we're at with that.
Okay.
So we need a motion on this, I think, to sign this?
I don't think you do, but it might not hurt. There's certainly no harm in that, it makes it more official. Do you want to take a vote authorizing Christine to sign on behalf of the Board of Selectmen?
I make a motion that we sign this letter acknowledging that we have, that the auditors have disclosed to us the-
We're disclosing to the auditors.
We acknowledge that we have disclosed to you, the town of Plimpton has not exceeded $750,000 in federally awarded funds.
That's just the last bullet. Every one of these is a bullet that we're-
Is a disclosure.
So these are our disclosures to the auditors?
Yes.
Yes.
Basically say, "NFT." If it turns out it was a problem, it wasn't bad.
Oh, okay. All right, so you made a motion? All right, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we have warrants were signed totaling $1,573.60. They were to the insurance company, Plimpton Halifax Express, Local Computer, Comcast, US Bank, Protection One, and Bell and Springs. And I think going forward, I was going to see what other towns do as far as at the selectmen's meetings, like with warrants, like John has mentioned, that sometimes there's not quite enough detail for maybe, say, if you're watching at home, to really be able to decipher what's going on. But it's also, I don't think that there's any harm in it being more of an administrative type thing, that somebody just signs them, so I can kind of see what other places are doing as far as that goes. We received the official award notices from Old Colony Planning Council that both of our DLTA grants have been awarded for both the Town Center Minister Plan and the Comprehensive Permit Regulation. So now we have it on paper, it's official. We received a letter from Jean Eckard commending the Plimpton firefighters who came to her assistance during one of the recent storms to help her remove what sounded like a very large amount of water from her cellar. So she was grateful for their service and commitment.
Very nice.
And we received a letter of resignation from David Smith from the Community Emergency Response Team and the Local Emergency Building Committee. And then closing out correspondence is the Plimpton Halifax Express, kind of recapping last week's meeting, and also some more tales of old Plimpton, so that's always nice to read.
You never hear it to my-
Yes. Is that it for you, Liz?
That's it.
Okay. All right, so that was Liz's report and correspondence. Do we want to make a motion to set up this fire advisory committee, or do we want to wait and put it on the agenda for next week?
Let's put it on next week, and give a little more thought to the people.
Talk about it? Okay, perfect. All right, so we'll put that on next week's agenda. All right, so any other business?
Fire advisory.
Pardon me?
Fire advisory.
Yes.
Yeah, it's probably going to be the Plimpton Fire Advisory Committee. All right.
While we're on agenda, can we set up maybe as an appointment, the earth removal, so that those busy people have a particular-
I had been telling them 6 o'clock in the email I sent, so maybe just to keep it consistent, we could give them that.
Yeah, that sounds perfect, because we should be done with Phil by plenty of time to meet.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay.
Good.
All right, so dates to remember, we're meeting next Monday, we're meeting 4-2 and 4-9, and I think we're going to be meeting every Monday until town meeting.
4/16 is a holiday.
4/16?
Forever.
Yeah. Forever. Okay. All right, so we can figure out if we need to meet another day that week later. Okay, so board's goals for coming year, economic development, I don't think we've really got anything new to report there. Financial management, we did sign the disclosures for the audit. Public safety?
They meet tomorrow night, we're waiting for the contract to sign, and hopefully we'll be able to do that Monday.
Terrific.
Breaking ground shortly.
All right, and Liz announced, we got, we received a couple of grants from Old Colony Planning Council. Volunteers, I don't think we've got anything new to report there, but we will be looking for volunteers when we set up this committee, so that's a little segue into that. Technology?
Nothing right now.
Board was great tonight.
Yeah.
It worked out very well.
It did.
How they couldn't make that into a widescreen.
Well, it's not a perfect world.
No, it is.
All right, so on to minutes. Open session, 2-5 and 2-12, I don't think we have them, do we?
You do, that's right. They weren't on last week's agenda, and I was told that you voted on them.
We did vote on 2-5, didn't we vote on the minutes for 2-5?
We voted on the executive session.
For 2-5.
Yeah.
But I don't think-
We didn't do 2-12.
Okay. That's, we'll hold both of these and we'll get it figured out.
Okay.
So if we've accepted them, we'll take them off, and we'll add tonight's meeting, and we'll try to get them all caught up next week.
Please send them again, just a little-
That's perfect.
Yeah, please.
Perfect.
I've got a new tower figure, and you can research in the, like, I have them with the draft, take it on.
Okay.
So when I go back to research in my emails-
Can't find them.
-come up and put them in.
Well, you've got to have Michael, I mean, they're out there on the network.
We can find them, we just have to, like-
Yeah, so bring them back in.
Have to dig, okay.
Dig.
Okay, no worries.
We're digging hard in the evening.
Okay, anything under rants and raves?
I have a rave.
All right, what's your rave?
So we had a joint meeting of the Garden Club and the Plimpton Historical Society Saturday night, with a good crowd, had a black supper. And Dave Alberti and Mike Lemieux agreed to co-chair a Springtown Cleanup Day in April.
Yay!
So a rave for them.
Absolutely.
And we're looking for a lot of people to show up, and there'll be more information coming out.
Terrific, that's great news. Okay, did you have anything?
The desserts were great, that was one of the raves.
Did Kim bring those?
No, she did the veggies.
Okay.
I was disappointed. And then my rave tonight-
What did the chocolate turn?
Yeah, there you go. It's Bob Lumer, I think, I did a masterful job of presenting a very complex report, and I think the tone he set and the sense of confidence in presenting that was pretty amazing.
I use that as a segue to mine, in that it was nice to have so many people that turned up to listen to Bob's report about the study, and, you know, I think we all care deeply about the fire department and the town, and it's great to see so many people stand up and come out and talk about it, so that was great.
Now we're back to our usual audience participation.
Actually, this is like four people more than we usually have.
Kind of crowded in here.
It is a little crowded in here. All right, so we don't have any other business, so do you have anything, Bree?
Gentlemen have anything?
I think people for Memorial Day, we will not have the band this year.
We will not have the band?
I've heard from the music teacher at school, and because Halifax postponed, canceled their parade last year, they still stay in line for this year.
Okay.
If they had had their parade, it would have been us.
We're not sharing services with them.
So, no, so you need volunteers to help you with Memorial Day? Okay.
They're not going to give us a drum set.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
We do have an idea, what did you want to say, that the Plimpton Historical Society, because they would open up in the morning for coffee.
Oh, great.
Oh, what a nice treat.
We have someone else that was thinking of doing something with a detachment truck, and having a little straighten for your kids here.
Yeah, we can coordinate with Phil.
And what people that want to put a vehicle in-
Perfect.
Or just put their car and maybe ride someone around in their convertible.
Okay, all right. You seem to be directing that at a certain individual. All right, do you gentlemen have anything for us? Okay, all right, so I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone, thank you.